All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Parks and Rec Commission. Today's date is June 28th, and we are, believe, ready to start.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to bring the...
Call the meeting in order?
Yeah, call the meeting to order.
And if you don't mind, Chairman, I'm gonna call a roll call, just because so Yvonne can take your all's names down.
Okay, alright.
Sonny Hirschfield.
Present.
Trevor Rayburn.
Present.
Everett Brophy.
Here.
Corey Johnston.
Here.
Logan Flaherty.
Not present.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Rodney. Um, so I guess we will start off with a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance. Alright, do we...
We have a flag.
Yeah, right there.
Great.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the breathing of justice for all.
I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico as the symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
So again, Mr. Chairman, I mentioned that I wasn't able to find a copy of the minutes from April, so...
Okay, and so I guess, we, can we just move that to the next meeting? Just approve the minutes for both at the next meeting? Alright, so we will go ahead and bypass the approval of minutes, which is on the agenda, item number three. We'll go ahead and move on to wel- welcoming members of the public. We don't have any members here today.
Any public comment?
Do we have any public comments?
No.
I'm sorry, and so I thought the, knowing from the pickleball group, did they send any information in or anything?
No, they had sent correspondence from the last, uh, meeting.
Yeah.
Uh, but nothing, no follow-up.
No follow-up, okay.
And I did change, because Melissa was out of office when I did submit the notice, I did change the email address on the notice to the general email, but we didn't have any response to it.
Okay, alright. Well, I guess we're moving quickly through, this might be our shortest meeting in a little while.
My fingers crossed.
We've had some extended meetings, so I hate to jinx this, but, um, but I'm gonna try to jinx this. Um, so, discussion of possible actions for today, um, pickleball update? Do you have any updates?
Well, I mean, I, I did my best. Uh, I believe one of the board members, I can't recall who, requested that we address the comments from the pickleball. And so, uh, the comment or, uh, that we had received based on the last meeting was that, uh, the pickleball group is still active. Um, they did decide, I mean, they're not hosting a tournament this year. Um, you know, again, I think I had mentioned last time, the Parks and Rec Department really would like to, to pick up that tournament. Uh, there was a lot of interest, but they just don't have the people to run the tournament, so I, we're gonna work with them to try to do that. They also had mentioned they, you know, they had put, submitted a funding request, um, back, uh, for the FY, uh, '21 budget, of course, with, uh, COVID, none of that was awarded, and they were, they made a request that we would consider in the next budget. Um, also, uh, part of the comment was, um, to provide a timeline of the White Mountain Master Plan, uh, because I, I had mentioned that that was, uh, fixing to start, and that would be an important part of that master plan. And so, um, to nail down an actual day, or month, um, or even season that pickleball courts would be built is, is impossible, because we just don't know what's gonna happen out of the master plan. So the next best thing I could do was provide you all with the schedule for the master plan process.
Okay.
And, let's see, you can see from the, from the schedule that, uh, it's supposed to kick off in May and be completed by the end of the year. Um, so we did have an initial kickoff meeting. During that meeting, we had a site visit at White Mountain with village staff only. Um, during that, uh, site meeting, and, and I apologize, it was, it was in early June, but I don't have the date that we had that kickoff meeting. During the meeting, we, um, identified the, all of the pieces of property that we want to be evaluated. Uh, we identified, um, all of the stakeholders, um, which is all of the different, uh, different sports from the youth leagues, uh, up to high school sports, um, and adult sports, includes the Ridosso Municipal Schools, neighboring property owners, um, like pickleball, dog park users, uh, people that use the, the trails. And I would also like to say, if you all have someone that you would like for, uh, the mayor to consider to appoint on the steering committee for the White Mountain Master Plan, you can always send them to me, uh, request by email, and then what we do is I'll just forward them on to the mayor, the mayor will give them a call, see what their interests are, kinda interview them, and then, um, then he appoints them to the steering committee. Um, we have submitted a list of names already to the, to the planner, um, and I'm, uh, they'll schedule an initial meeting with the steering committee, um, soon, but I don't have that scheduled as well yet.
If, um, I think, personally, like, if I could get a copy of that list of names that you, you know, of the organizations and people that you've already forwarded, that would be helpful to me, um, if I'm gonna, I mean, I don't wanna, I, I'm assuming some of the people that I would immediately think of are gonna be on that list already, and, um, you know, I don't know if you wanna do, if that would be duplication, or if...
I don't mind sending, you know, the, I can send the board, the list to the board. There are some holes in it, that contacts that I didn't have, and so any feedback, um, is appreciated, and again, the mayor's gonna have the ultimate, uh, decision on appointing the, those steering committee members.
How many people are on that steering committee, do you know?
Um, no, I don't recall.
And are, are there specific groups that they're trying to ensure are represented on that steering committee?
We want to, I mean, my goal is to have everyone represented. Of course, you know, every user group, uh, outside of the, the people that are assigned to that steering committee, there's gonna be public, uh, participation opportunities through community meetings.
Well, thanks for, um, providing us. Now, I noticed, um, if we have a January 22nd date of completion of that master plan, does that mean the, this coming year's fiscal budget will include projects that are going to be potentially started in between January and July of, of next year?
No, so the, our, our budget will start in July.
Right. I mean, we're about to start the next fiscal year budget, which will begin July to July, right?
So we can make some budget requests for the next fiscal year, and that's, that's really what I like about timing these master plans is, I mean, I, I would like to fully take advantage of the budget cycle, and that would definitely be the goal. I mean, we wouldn't have projects, well...
It's tricky, because when the, you know, when you don't have the, the, the actual planning document completed until January, and you have to have your fiscal, certain budget turned in, in July of the previous year, you have a six-month gap potentially where, you know, you didn't know what the plan was gonna be, so you couldn't necessarily budget to start projects, because you didn't know if they were gonna be included in the plan.
So, uh, just to restate, like, how our, our cycle works, so they'll open up the budget process typically around February, March, and we can submit our requests, uh, for the upcoming budget year that starts in July. So we will have an opportunity, if this is completed on time, to submit some initial requests. Typically, out of the master plan process, they're gonna identify a lot of potential projects. They won't be designed. It'll, they'll just be in concept only, but it will include some cost estimates. And so, for example, if pickleball court was a desired amenity, it should have a cost estimate in there. And so we could very well, you know, have, well, again, we'll have opportunities to request funding for that. My, um, my thoughts are though, that is, that it's gonna be a significant investment that's gonna possibly need more than, than our local budget dollars, our general fund or lodgers tax. I mean, it, you know, there's, one of the user, user groups or, uh, needs is a community center, and if that gets, you know, a, a lot of public support, I mean, you're talking three to 10 million dollars, depending on the type of, you know, facility you're gonna build, so, it may take a, a larger effort than just a budget request.
We need one, though.
Yeah, I mean, I was, I was, as I was gathering my documents, I just, it happened to, to see, when we first started talking about this, the paper kinda was loose and came out. And we first started talking with the pickle group, pickleball group in, um, in 2016 about locating a, a, a site for the, a new court for them. And so it's been a significant amount of time that they've been, that they've been waiting and, you know, working with us, and, and so I just, I, I, I think it's fair to try to put it as a priority item, just because it's, I mean, either, either we need to do that, or we just need to tell them it's gonna be, you know, I just feel like we've been working with them for a long time, and it's important to...
I would agree, and, and I would relate it to similar comments what you made in the, in the Grindstone Master Plan, is if you feel that strongly about it, or the commission does, that you recommend that as a, uh, you know, a priority in the development of that area, and see if you can push it through over a new dog park.
I, over, yeah, well, we, we, I remember some of our most, uh, well-intended meetings have been dog park meetings, and a new dog park, a new dog park is, it would be, I mean, I'm not assuming there would be any relocation. I really don't wanna reach that topic, but, um, alright, well, thanks for putting this together. I do wanna, I, I, I would like to, uh, make a recommendation that we prioritize the people quite highly, and, and as we move forward, just, I don't know if you wanna make a formal recommendation for that, but I personally, like I said, because we've been working with them, and they've been patient with us for so many years.
I, I think that it would be beneficial and mean more. Again, I, I tell you, or I've told you in the past and expressed that, um, not only on, from my behalf, but, um, from the governing body, is they really like to hear your all's opinion, and when it comes in a, an approved motion, um, from the commission, it has more weight, than just peop- the general, uh, public making comments. So if that's something that you would wanna entertain, I think it would, it has a lot of value.
Yeah, I definitely think we can make a...
You wanna make a, a motion to that?
So, you're just saying you wanna make a motion to prioritize the completion or consideration of a pickleball facility in as timely a manner as possible?
Uh, yeah, yeah, that's, that's what I would, I would like to say. I don't know that I wanna make a motion.
Does that sound close enough to a motion? So can we, can we make that a motion, that the board would like to, um, prioritize the consideration or completion of a pickleball facility in as timely a manner as possible?
Yeah, maybe and completion.
Consideration.
Consideration and completion? Okay.
I'll second.
In favor?
In my...
All in favor?
All in favor, yeah. Alright, um, so we have a second discussion item, disc golf court proposal.
Yeah, so the, the next, uh, two pages in your packet, um, are relating to this agenda item. The fir- the first one is a map of property on, uh, the north end of the Ridosso, um, city limits boundary, and it's, um, across the street, uh, from the Eagle Creek Sports Complex. Um, it's, uh, was formerly, at one time, they were looking at it for a cemetery. Uh, they actually sold the property at one point, after they considered it for a cemetery, and then the water department purchased it back, um, just to retain it for watershed purposes. And so, you know, the, again, the purpose they bought it was to, for, to protect the village's watershed in Eagle Creek. Uh, they really don't, you know, wanna see it developed. Um, but, uh, just all the momentum we have with, uh, pickleball and, um, you know, outdoor recreation, um, you know, our department is really supporting of, uh, pickleball, the outdoor, I'm, pickleball, disc golf, sorry, disc golf.
That's one heck of a pickleball court, bud!
Disc golf. And, uh, so we're, I was, you know, recently, the village was doing an inventory of properties, public properties, and this one came, when I saw it, I was thinking it would be an opportunity to, um, you know, a large piece of property where we could look at a, possibly a 27-hole disc golf course. And so, um, in conversations with the local disc golf pro, uh, that y'all may or may not know, we brought it up, I brought it up as a, uh, you know, just to see if this property was conducive to a disc golf course. And so we really haven't looked at a layout or anything, but I wanted to get your all's, uh, the commission's feedback, uh, because if it is something that you all would support, I would like to, to continue moving forward in those conversations and putting together some cost estimates and, um, you know, to try to develop an additional course. And I would like to say, before y'all start your discussion, that, um, the discussions that I've been a part of, I mean, and I think it's pretty obvious to everyone here, that this golf has been growing in Ridosso, and first instinct, you're like, why would we need another course? Uh, you know, we have 27 holes at Grindstone, we have 18 holes at Moon Mountain, we have nine holes at, uh, Wingfield Park. Um, you know, I, I, I could try to describe it, but I would actually defer to Everett, and, and he could give you a little more, uh, information on what an additional course would do for Ridosso and disc golf in Rido- in Ridosso.
Sure. Uh, so, yes, we do have a few courses right now, which are great, and we do have courses built for multiple skill levels. The addition of another 27-hole course on this type of land allows us to, one, host and hold bigger tournaments, it gives us another opportunity to create another multi-skilled course, something that's easy to walk, like the front nine at Grindstone. And I don't know if you guys have been to the course or anything like that, so the front nine holes at Grindstone is a wonderful leisurely walk down by the river, and it's shady, and it's beautiful, and it's a great place to hang out in the afternoons. Um, if you go and you play a course like Moon Mountain, obviously, the terrain becomes much harder to navigate. Uh, it is not for an entry level or beginner skill level type player, um, although it does attract a large amount of disc golfers to come here for that, uh, because it is designed by a world champion disc golfer, and it is by all means a championship level course. Um, this addition would allow me the opportunity to host larger and, bigger's not the correct word, it would allow me the opportunity to host multi-day tournaments with a significant, larger amount of players participating for numerous days, so...
Because of the, what, wh- why?
Okay, so, uh, not everyone's been to those courses, but...
I've, I've, so I've been to Grindstone, I've been to Moon Mountain, I've played both those courses.
So Grindstone is a great course, don't get me wrong, but there's only par threes there. If you go to Moon Mountain, we have par fours, we have par fives, we have a very diverse course there. A lot of players are coming from lower elevations, and hiking a course like Moon Mountain is not only strenuous on their body, but it's taxing when you play a, play a tournament also. The land that Rodney's proposing, or the land that we're talking about here, this is totally the perfect hybrid between the front nine that's at Grindstone and the ability to have the distance or the technical shots that you find at Moon Mountain. So this is going to be a great, just overall fit into the disc golf scene that we're growing here. And like I said, the fact that we have 27 holes here, 27 holes there, we can have, I don't know, let's see, Grindstone can typically handle 200 players a day with a flex start tournament. I can probably only have about 100 at Moon Mountain, and then having this would allow me to have another 200 to 300 players come to participate in these big disc golf tournaments.
How, how many players participated in the Memorial Day, the, took the full moon tournament that we had?
Oh, the glow round?
Yeah.
Uh, we had 57 participants.
And do, are they primarily locals, or we, how many, what percentage?
So, Ridosso has most definitely become a disc golf attraction. So we have players, Texas, Arizona, Colorado, all over New Mexico are flocking to Ridosso, too. One, enjoy the mountain, obviously, like we all do, but two, to be able to play these diverse courses that we have all over town. So when we host or post that we're having tournaments, um, I'll use Lincoln County War Disc Golf Tournament that we had earlier in the year as the reference. We had players from Alaska, we had players from Michigan, we had players from Florida, we had players from Kansas, we had players from California, we had players from Arizona, Colorado, and they filled the tournament up in seven minutes during the registration.
Wow.
So we were able to sell that, we had two, we had 200 players for that tournament, 214.
Seven minutes, that's like a, that's like a concert.
They, we, we had 47 players on the waiting list, waiting to get into the tournament.
And to answer your question, I think the, the, the Glow in the Dark Tournament...
It's a smaller one.
It's, and it's geared towards locals, it's not like the...
But it's just the most recent one that I know, and it...
Right, and, and it's a for fun tournament, it's not a PDGA sanctioned event. Obviously, this course, we would make it a PDGA sanctioned course, we would get all the right people involved to make sure that this is considered for a national tour event, so on, so forth.
Do they have a circuit with it, or a tool?
Definitely, definitely, and I've been working, I've been working very different, or very, very hard on developing those relationships with the disc golf pro tour people, with the national tour holders, to get our, to get our beautiful little mountain town put on the map for disc golf. We've done an incredible job so far. I mean, Grindstone was voted number one best disc golf course in the state of New Mexico. Moon Mountain was voted third best disc golf course in New Mexico. Um, and I think there was, there was 40, 40 courses that were on that list. So we took first place and third place on best courses. Um, not many people have played Moon Mountain, especially my, my men and female professional divisions, 40 and older. It's, it, it's, it's a pretty hard...
Strenuous course.
Yeah, it's a strenuous course, and if you come from 1,500 feet elevation up to 6,900 feet, and then you have to walk five miles up some super steep terrain while competing in a tournament, it's, it is taxing on your body. Obviously, for the men's professional open, female professional open, advanced men, advanced women, Moon Mountain is a great course for them to go and, and battle it out on. But a, a little bit more diversity and an easier terrain would allow me to attract those, I'm not gonna say older players, but it'd allow me to host more divisions during a tournament, to fill.
I think considering, like, the purpose that the village purchased this property, and, you know, there's, there's don't want a lot of development on it, I think it sounds like a great idea to, to utilize it, is that...
Yeah, 'cause we're talking, you know, a few concrete...
Are, are, are gonna be parking.
Sure.
Because a parking area would kind of, I mean, in a watershed, you know, it changes the drainages.
You, you're absolutely correct, and Rodney...
I think that's one of the shortcomings of the current courses we have. When we go, when you, you're, I, I've never been at, I don't remember what you called the, the tournament, the...
Oh, the Lincoln County War.
The Lincoln County War Tournament, but 200 cars, it's a, too many cars for that area. I don't know how they do it, but...
It was very difficult to accommodate all of the players, get them there. So we, we hosted our tournament, and it was called, it, it's a flex start tournament. So not all of those players were on the course at the same time. So, you know, cars were starting every 15 minutes, five players per car, so by the time my afternoon players were teeing off, my morning players were already done off the course and vacated the premise. We still ran into some significant parking issues, obviously, with that. Um, luckily, the village had some great accommodations for us, and we were able to figure out where to stick those cars and shuttle them over to the course and get them to play. Um, I think, and Rodney, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the Manjo Turnoff Road off of 532, right there by the gate, there's already kind of a parking area going back on that dirt road? Am I wrong?
Um, yeah, I'm not sure that there is a parking area, but, um, like, this is a very first conversation, a second conversation. I had one with, uh, with Everett, but, so what, um, it's on my list, again, if, depending on the feedback from the, the commission, I would like to approach our, our watershed committee, the department, uh, the director, and then the committee that they set up to evaluate, uh, projects. Um, so, and, and I couldn't agree with you more, parking is always everything we do around Ridosso, parking is...
Well, and I mean, it looks like it's a little too far from the baseball parks to, I mean, it depends on how you set that up, but you could potentially use that parking, um, for tournaments or bigger events. I don't know, there'd be, have to be some kind of agreement with, with what's going on at a...
I only have, like, I have a couple of relatively, probably minuscule questions. Um, one of them, you could probably answer real quick, but how many other disc golf courses are in Lincoln County? Not just Ridosso, but outside Ridosso, at, at, and, at the inn, how many other, wherever, how many other courses are available?
Sure, so, um, the Inn of the Mountain Gods has an 18-hole course. It is primitive in its development, so dirt tee pads, uh, uncleared fairways, and unfortunately, we've, we've been trying to work with the Inn of the Mountain Gods for, I think, three and a half or four years now to convince them that we need tee pads. Uh, and I guess I should back up. For a pro-disc golf association sanctioned event, there has to be a designated tee pad area. I can't have players teeing off from the dirt.
So what I'm trying to get at is, when you bring these events to town, is there an opportunity for those that don't participate in that event to have someplace else to go?
Most certainly.
Because those are crowded. That's my concern, is as much that, that the regular folks that live here get an opportunity to play when they've, their courses are being consumed.
Correct, so yes, you can play the Inn of the Mountain Gods course in that case, uh, the nine-hole beginner, kids-friendly course that's at Wingfield Park. Um, and then there is a, there's a course at...
There's a course in Cloudcroft.
That's what I was gonna say, is there a course in Cloudcroft? What about Lincoln, Capitan, are there any out there?
Quite a bit, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, the one in Cloudcroft is, is really great. Uh, there is a disc golf course in Alamo Gordo, there is one at the Church of the Nazarene, but I don't know about public access to that course. I think, I think you have to be a member of the church there to...
Alright, so that's my, that's one of my questions. The other one, is there a way to show a potential estimate of income? If we do this, is there a way to show what this might produce as far as revenue?
Sure, um, I don't...
Like, compared to what you're current, what we're currently doing, is there a way to show, like, this is what we might be able to come up with in the next 12 months?
Definitely, um...
Is that...
I, I would say that, you know, as far as like, cost estimation, you know, so, our courses are free to use as a Parks and Recreation resource. So you do not have to pay for a tee time, you don't have to go and do any of those things, you can just show up to the course and play.
That's for tournament use, too, isn't it?
That was my next question, is the tournament generated...
For tournament use, typically, what we do is we actually have a special events permit that is purchased through Parks and Recreation. We rent the course for...
And I don't know that much about disc golf. It's really, is it bigger out east than it is here in the west? But.
We're, we're definitely finally starting to get recognized as a disc golf destination. California, obviously, that's where disc golf kind of originated. It's huge there. It fades out about halfway through Arizona, kinda skips over us and then once you start getting into central part of Texas, then it really is, you know, is thriving. Colorado's doing incredible things with disc golf. Um, and they're, they're of course getting towards now that northern border of New Mexico there and they have a lot of tournaments happening in conjunction, New Mexico, Colorado. You know, they're working a lot together. Uh, I've done a wonderful job as far as developing relationships with our West Texas golf scene. And we have a lot of reciprocation now between the West Texas disc golf scene here in New Mexico and Albuquerque's a weird one. They're kind of their own disc golf entity, so to speak, but they definitely do a lot more tournament stuff with Colorado and and everything like that. And we're kinda getting, we have in years past been skipped over, but since we've had the addition of Moon Mountain, we've started doing the sanctioned leagues where, you know, we are throwing more sanctioned tournaments. Now there is definitely more of an attraction to come here. One, the weather's beautiful just about year round. Two, you can play golf clear through December.
Sure.
You know, um, you have a couple of snowy days. So that makes it desirable for people to come this direction also. I thought, does that answer, kinda answer where you were going with that?
Yeah, but I mean, we're trying to grow this, continue to grow the sport, not only locally, but and to, to attract, have more events that bring in people.
Do people, do people win money or prizes or just?
Only in the professional divisions.
Oh.
So if you play in advanced, intermediate, recreational, of course, that goes for male, female and youth divisions. Uh, you are typically paid out in prizes, which is discs, disc golf equipment. Um, I think last year we gave away some carved bears that one of our local guys did. Um, you know, one of our local artists donated some paintings and some pottery and we use those as kind of like trophies and payout and fun things like that. Um, yes, you can win money, but if you enter the money division and you do not place, guess what you go home with? A whole lot of nada. So.
Sounds like my regular golf.
What is, what is another destination in Mexico? What is, where would you go if you couldn't come here? What's the other?
Uh, maybe like Cipapu or Red River.
Okay.
Um, only because they have a cool disc golf course and they only have one, but it's on their ski area. So it, it, it's, it's fun. It's, it's quite the hike. It would be like hiking up the lower part of Ski Apache to play around.
The market is.
Um, not much market. I think the only other town in New Mexico that has even, they might actually have a one more course than we do now or yes, because their college just put one in is Farmington. Uh, but it's super hot. I recently competed in the Aztec tournament that was up there and uh, man, I'm not going back till the fall. Let's put it that way.
Yeah, that's where I'm from, I'm from. So many summers in Aztec.
Okay, so I, is it the Farmington Community College then? I think that they just put.
San Juan.
San Juan. So the San Juan College just put a uh, eighteen hole course on their property. They have another one at Lions Park and then they have another one that's in, in Aztec.
So, do you ever, I, do we need any more discussion of this?
I don't, I've, I think the objective of that discussion is that Rodney continues to have discussion more.
Yeah.
Yeah. I see no problem with it. As far as the discussion continued, I'm all, I'm a hundred percent behind that.
Well, then, I'd make a motion to, to pursue development of this golf course at village property on Highway five thirty-two. At least, I don't know if we need a formal motion, but I would.
Um, if you all want, would like to make one, we'll, we'll use it. And I mean, like, as I move on to different committees with watershed, I mean, I would say that we um, had an initial conversation you'd supported, uh, to keep moving forward to looking into it.
Second that.
Yeah.
I'll excuse myself from that motion.
How about a vote? All in favor or?
Favor.
Aye.
Alright.
Aye.
Alright. You good? Alright, we have some master plan updates.
So on Wingfield Park, um, we have had a, a couple of opportunities, um, already and uh, discussions about the development of Wingfield Park. In um, in early June, uh, on June fifth, they uh, the planner was at the farmer's market in Wingfield Park. He took comments from uh, people who visited the market that day. Um.
They had the, the plan out.
Yes.
Uh, that's nice. I like.
And so they uh, took notes and I think the notes that they gathered are on the backside of that, uh, the steering committee agenda. Um, so some notes were taken from that farmer's market. Um, the, the first map in your packet that I attached is the map that came out of the, the two thousand nineteen uh, comprehensive plan. Um, they utilized uh, some of the notes and some initial feedback from the village uh, to, to a little more, to refine the second map, um, that I've included in your packet. Um, again, there's a list of, of steering committee members that was um, uh, included uh, or recommended by the, the mayor. There's some business owners, uh, pr- uh, neighboring, uh, or neighbors, um, and then just interested parties. A lot of them are, are homeowners from the surrounding neighborhoods. And they followed up with a, a second um, steering committee meeting on June fifteenth. Took more uh, comments regarding um, the conceptual plan and reviewing of some of the notes from that initial meeting at uh, from the farmer's market. And there wasn't really much uh, additional or any changes uh, from that, uh, the farmer's market comments and from the conceptual plan. Um, and so the next step is uh, after uh, is to incorporate the, the notes from the June fifteenth steering committee. Submit uh, the next version of the conceptual plan to the village of Ridosso for our review. And then they'll schedule a follow-up um, steering committee meeting that incorporates also the village notes. And so we're looking to have the next meeting um, a, a site visit uh, before uh, mid-July. Um, I'll be happy to answer any questions y'all may have. About the two different conceptual plans. Also a recent update, again, I don't know if y'all have been in that area, but um, two weeks ago, we uh, worked with the Department of Transportation to put up uh, counters on Grindstone and Spring Street. So we counted the traffic on a, on a normal, a normal week, weekday and weekend. We went from Tuesday to Tuesday. The second week, uh, we put up uh, barriers on Center Street to block the traffic again, from Tuesday to Tuesday, so we could get weekday traffic, weekend traffic counts on, on how the closing of that street will affect uh, the neighborhoods. And so um, that concludes, uh, that study will finish tomorrow. We'll remove the barricades and reopen the street and pull the counters. And then that additional information or data collected from those counters will be incorporated into uh, on development and, you know, as for feedback as well as um, to be utilized during the plan.
That's great. I um, was talking with a resident in that area at a farmer's market where these were actually up and we hadn't looked at the maps yet, but I mentioned that there was a plan for closing Center Street at some point and the resident was kinda surprised and we just discussed, you know, that the potential impacts, but it's good to have an actual study of the impacts. Yeah, I think that's smart. Or I mean, well, necessary.
Yeah, I agree.
Um, how? So, has there been any feedback on the closing? I mean, were there any calls or comments to the village concerning that?
There hasn't.
Was there a, was there a posted reason for the closing of the street?
I didn't see anything the other day. It was just barricades. You couldn't drive down it?
It wasn't posted on the street, but it was uh, a PSA was submitted.
Okay.
Um, by our public information officer. So it was on Facebook and I'm not sure where else they share that. Um, but it was posted, um, the.
It's not the first time. I mean, when you've had events there, we've had events there. We've closed Center Street before, so.
You know, we, and as far as like, you know, that his historical information on events, we really, when we have the events, we haven't had any. No complaints. Amazingly enough, we haven't. Even posting, you would think posting the closure for a week and, and not people being aware. We haven't had any comments about why it was closed or what's going on. Now, before the Parks Department requested funding to, for this plan, we went door to door. We put up door hangers on every door in the immediate vicinity of the park and we spoke to the people uh, that were home. And um, people did express concern about how it would impact the traffic in their neighborhood. And so, I mean, again, it's vital information.
And I guess the, the one, so we took a traffic count and this is not, I mean, we're starting to move out of our area, but I mean, it is potentially gonna impact us because people might ask this question. Um, where were the traffic counters? You said, was, one was on Spring Road?
One was on Spring and one was on Grindstone.
Okay.
Wingfield and Grindstone.
I guess, I guess my question, you know, I, I don't know if it's Arapahoe.
No, no, no. I'm sorry.
Arapahoe that's right there. Because to enter, to enter those neighborhoods, you have to go around Wingfield, up Grindstone, which is gonna increase potentially the traffic on Grindstone. But one of my questions has been, how much is it gonna increase the, the one entry point that, I mean, I know there's a few entry points, but one of the major entry points is right there. I, I think it's Arapahoe. Um, it might be reservoir. It's like, there's, but currently.
I think you're right.
Um. And as an entry point, like, I just, depending, I mean, depending on how much additional traffic flow goes there, I, I think there might be, that's a, that's a kind of a major thoroughfare there? I would think that we might need a stop sign somewhere on Grindstone.
Well, and the village has a, a traffic guide on how they're gonna develop roads and so, um, you know, if, if that's something that, you know, that, that you think should be considered, we can always refer to that, that guide. They, they paid an engineer to develop this because what was happening, and y'all might remember, uh, people started requesting.
Speed bumps.
Speed bumps and speed humps. And so instead of it being just uh, kinda based on nothing other than comments or negative feedback, they wanted to base it off of data. And so they put together with an engineer, um, a guide that gives stipulations on when certain things should be applied on whether it's stop signs or speed humps or.
If, if they close that street, you'll figure that out in a week or two when that study comes out. You'll know exactly how many cars.
Well, but if you're not counting them there. I mean, the thing is you have to count, you have to count on the entry point at, I mean.
I'm not, I'm not sure what road you're talking about.
It's Spring, I think, is the one that you're talking about. That's the one that rolls the backside of Wingfield.
Is it on the backside of, yeah, it's on the backside of Wingfield?
And then there's Grindstone.
No, it's actually, uh, because to get all up into this section, because to get right around Wingfield Park, you go on Spring Road, but really on Spring Road, there's only, you know, there's not really much of a, a neighborhood there. But if you come up, if you come across Arapahoe, you can actually go up Center Street and you access the whole backside of that section up there on the, on the. In fact, I was looking for a lost dog the other day. I couldn't believe how many roads are up there. I was like, I had no idea. So that's, I mean, that was, I, I talked with the person about it prior to going and kind of exploring up there, but once I explored, I was like, there's kind of a lot of, oh, but, and see, even if you take like Signal, I guess you could take Signal and then you end up on Arapahoe, but that's kind of a roundabout way. Arapahoe ends up, I think, being one of the main entry points. I just think that should be uh, potentially looked at. I don't know. If you're gonna do a count, you might need to do a count there because anybody who would normally go up Center Street to get to their houses up in that neighborhood would probably be accessing. I mean, if you live on Spring, you're gonna access it from Spring. But if you live anywhere else, you're gonna access it from Arapahoe. Just thought. Um. The uh, I, I've have seen this plan for years. I really think it's a, a great plan. I, I'm glad that it's moving forward on.
I don't know which one I like better, honestly. Are they both pretty, I mean, they're pretty close to the same.
Yeah, I don't. Did, did you already identify the major differences?
Um, no, but I'll, 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 I'll mention them.
I do see like the.
Plaza entry point right there, article number four.
Well, the, the, the thing is, this is a twenty nineteen version.
Yes.
This is the propos- uh, the proposed version based on the data from twenty twenty-one. So you can take this one and kinda wipe it away.
Yeah.
Really what we're looking at is this one and all the information you need is on the back of this other sheet. It's all based on this one, right?
Yes.
I guess, where, all the parking then will move down to the, that's one of the big changes, is all the parking moves down to the, to Wingfield Street.
Right, and you get rid of that parking area that's there by the playground?
Yes, and that's something that I'm, I, I think needs to be reconsidered. The way I see it, if you take away the parking, you're gonna, you're going to uh, decrease the traffic through Spring because there's not a parking to access the playground.
Right.
But at the same time, convenient wise, your activity is gonna drop way down at that playground if people have to walk from, all the way from the rack to get to the playground.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that.
So, uh, you know, one thing they had mentioned was possibly relocating the pit playground. And I'm not sure if, if that's actually the, uh, that, that, the history behind that playground is there's a homeowner in the neighborhood that actually uh, kickstarted that uh, playground development. And the, uh, the name of the playground's Carson's Corner. It's named after their youngest or their child. I don't think that's the right thing to move it. Maybe adding another second one in the playground, maybe a smaller one. Uh, but I don't think moving it is.
Well, it's up there close to the pavilion too, where there's a lot of gatherings and then the, so supervision becomes a little simpler for parents who are at the, at the.
So, but the only, I mean, I don't, I, I.
I do agree though. I think it needs to potentially, maybe a second one might be, uh, down closer to Wingfield Street.
Mm-hmm. Somewhere between one and two, one, two and eleven, somewhere in that area.
Well, and another thing that was, that was brought up in the past, but isn't reflected on either of these plans is um, uh, like a splash pad.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I um, had looked into, a couple of years ago, I'd looked into a version of a splash pad that could be utilized as an ice rink um, as well. And so, um, I mean, that's a possibility. Uh, but there, but from the steering committee meetings that I sat in, most people had comments about more trash cans and.
Yeah.
It was really no comments that, I mean, that, I mean, they were no brainers, signage, more trash cans. But overall, the feedback was overwhelmingly positive about reshaping the park. You know, again, uh, several of these people on the list are homeowners in the area and no one mentioned anything about not closing uh, that road and expanding the park.
I think having that amount of green space right in the center of town is, is really just kind of a, gonna be a pinnacle point for all of our visitors that come up here. It's a beautiful place to picnic, hang out.
Events, buying events in with downtown, I think is gonna be beneficial for the merchants downtown too.
Another thing that I wanna mention, and it's actually timely, is uh, during the monsoon season, if you, uh, Midtown is like, the water level, the runoff is right at the curb level. And again, I mentioned, we have a watershed director, we have a department, we, or a um, uh, of internal meeting, review for projects. Part of the development will, is on this is to capture some of that runoff from that neighborhood and the roads. Because what's happening is a lot of this runoff is just dumping right down into Midtown and uh, it, it's, I mean, it's getting close to where it's gonna flood businesses. And so all of the runoff that would normally run down uh, Spring Road, we're looking and diverting that and, and kinda spreading it out into the park instead of concentrating that runoff in the ditch like it's happening now.
Is that, the, yeah.
Yeah, cuz that ditch right off.
And you can see, yeah.
It's represented in the map, what you're talking about.
But that's an important aspect that, that we really haven't uh, spoken about in these steering committee meetings, but will have a, a, a really big impact or, and it'll minimize that runoff going into the Midtown area.
Yeah, I like that. Dual purpose. Y- will you keep the landscaping, like the natural grass, the, that's kind of already there at the park right now?
Yeah, we really haven't gotten into the, into like that level of detail.
Sure.
Uh, but the more activity that I'm seeing in the meadow, uh, that I think we oughta put some supplemental irrigation. A lot of it should be natural, the, uh, is what I would like to see. But areas that are gonna be utilized with metal where we wanna try to maintain a turf, that we oughta put supplemental irrigation.
Yeah. Sure.
Or the, is there any other feedback um, regarding the, and there'll be some public uh, meeting opportunities as well in the future?
By the retention pond that you're talking about down there, that's just gonna be like you were talking about with the capturing the natural water and.
Yes.
Keeping that there.
We're trying to, to slow it down and let it uh, percolate into the ground. And instead of it just running down the ditch right towards Midtown or into the river.
I have one question. What is, what is meant by future Ridosso development opportunity? Is that currently, that's currently village property?
Yes, it is village property.
It will continue to be village property?
Yes, it will continue to be village property. Some, um, I've been.
Not sure what they wanna do.
Well, I have expressed interest um, quite some time ago in the uh, what that, it served at one point um, as a purchasing warehouse. And then the yard was the um, the maintenance yard for the street and the water department. Um, those buildings or, or departments are gonna be relocated. And so if we're gonna, you know, look at hosting larger events or even increasing our space, we're gonna need a staging area. Um, at the warehouse, it's already been granted to our department to utilize it for storage. And so uh, you know, again, I really envision it as, as a staging area for hosting events. Um, there is a, there's a few old buildings and an old uh, radio tower in that area that are not being utilized. And, and again, I would hope and the neighbors are in agreement that we just clean it up and use it only for, you know, for, for event staff or uh, parking for event staff, that kinda stuff. But the goal is to clean it up. One of the comments from the neighbors is that warehouse uh, to dress it up a little bit during the development as well. At least dress it up.
Yeah.
But that could have some service, some other functions as well. I just thought, uh, again, that, that would be my ideas is, is to place to, to store stages and, and uh, chairs and tables and whatnot needed to support events.
Sure. Park the tour buses of whoever's participating in those events or.
I mean, we've already, we've already shown our, in support for this project. We don't really.
No, it was just more of an update. And I'll try to keep you all informed through the entire process and then uh, provide opportunities to participate whenever those arise.
I like that.
So the next item under uh, recreation report, I included a lot of flyers of activities that's uh, going on. And, and this is all, I included one from the community center. Um.
I was wondering if you'd attended any of the fogging lessons?
No. But there's a lot of opportunities uh, for people to community center.
Yeah.
It really is. Um, and then uh, we have just a series of things. We have an upcoming basketball tournament. We have uh, movie night at the pool. We have an adult uh, night at the pool. We're currently running open gym uh, basketball for adults on Tuesdays. We're, uh, running uh, open gym volleyball on Thursday nights. Um, we have uh, free opportunities, what we're calling Wingfield Wednesdays. Um, there's opportunities for kids, I believe, seven to twelve, free to go and uh, play games um, with our recreation staff. They organize different games every week. We'll soon be opening up uh, wilderness weekends. It'll be uh, two-day uh, themed activities um, in the month of July. Uh, the first one is the uh, July night through the tenth and it, it's again geared about the games in Wingfield Park. Um, that, the Wingfield weekends uh, does cost, uh, people can register on the Ridosso Parks and Rec dot com. It's either twenty dollars uh, for the two days or fifteen dollars per day. And um, kinda on that wilderness weekends, what we're trying to do is try to get back into the wilderness camp that we used to offer. And um, if this is, is a success, which I believe it will be, you know, we'll cut, we'll uh, evaluate uh, opening up back a camp series in uh, next summer or in the future.
Are they, are you using vans to transport kids?
No, uh, well.
Showing up in two different locations during the.
You know what? I'm not actually saying, we still have the vans. We still have, um, where we can do that. I'm not, I, I thought they were gonna show up on site. I don't.
It looks like most of them are at a single site. I thought they were transitioning from one place to another, but it doesn't.
And then we also have a softball coming up, uh, camp coming up on July fifteenth and sixteenth as well. And then after that, we'll be, uh, well, in the meantime, we'll also be gearing up for our youth uh, fall sports of uh, soccer, uh, football and uh, volleyball.
I just wanna go back. If you guys haven't gone to the adult night at the swimming pool thing, I've gone every year now and it's a great time. It's super fun to just hang out.
That's right.
Mm-hmm.
And then other activities, of course, the pool is open seven days a week. The Wibbit is, uh, starting this week, was supposed to be open seven days a week.
Oh, really?
Rain and, but uh.
We'll take it.
If y'all, uh, if y'all have any other questions regarding recreation, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, I'll move on to project updates.
I had, I had one question. Um, is, is there any point at which we have to start restricting access to Grindstone Lake due to lake level?
You know, it, it was brought up in the master plan that we should consider um, doing that very thing based upon the, the surface area. There's not any hard calculations or numbers for us um, to actually, you know, um, figure out what that reduction in capacity would be. Um, we are uh, you know, we haven't had a day this summer yet that has been, that it, where it's overwhelmed the lake. Um, we did get uh, full on parking on Saturday, but even then, I mean, we haven't had any negative feedback. It seems like our capacity has so far worked out really well.
I was just, I was just wondering if, if Eric and if the village as a, as a reservoir, if it becomes an issue with like turbidity and use of the water, you know, I mean.
No, the, the information that I've heard up to this point is, I mean, one, um, you know, they, they have mechanisms to battle turbidity. Um, it's where the, the levels that they draw from the lake, because I guess it's different at different levels and so they make those adjustments. Whenever they did the testing of the amount of the people for recreating in the water, they, um, so far, Um, they haven't had any even measurable amounts of anything that wasn't normal. Um, and so, I mean, to answer your question regarding operations or uh, uh, like water chemistry. There hasn't, there are no restrictions. There's no.
And there's no foreseeable at this point level where we would, we would start to, I mean.
It was brought up in the master plan, but again, there wasn't, there weren't any triggers or anything like that developed in the master plan.
I just, it's, it's been a long time. Well, it's been a while since I've seen the level, the level lake so low. And then, and I know this is, this is helping, but. Ultimately, for the last several weeks, we've been getting, I mean, you know, there's more wa- a lot more water evaporating and being used by the community than being. Replaced and that we can possibly replace. That's probably gonna, you know, hope that we have a great monsoon season.
Yeah. I don't know that I answered your question.
I, I mean, I I don't know that it's a question that, I mean, it's, I don't know that you, it's your question. I just. So I just wonder if it's been discussed because it is ultimately kind of impacts your operations.
It, uh, you know, I, I can uh, recall. Wasn't that long ago that the water level was even lower than it was now. It was, wasn't too long before.
And when they first, when we first started swimming, we we had started allowing swimming. It was, I think it was a few feet higher than it is now.
Well, I think it was lower than what it was now because.
And where we, where the rocks we jumped off of and it's like.
Well, if you'll recall, in the first cove there, when when you approached the lake on the right hand side, that first cove, there's a, a test pour.
Yeah.
And that test pour was, was. The water was well below that and the, and that test pour is still underwater. And they were allowing swimming at that time, so. Uh, but I'm, there just hasn't been any uh, red flags from. Um, from whether it's the whoever controls the water or internally from the village. It was a recommendation from the plan, but again, there were no, uh, there were no trigger points or anything like that.
Um, did we, did the village pave the road up the Mud Canyon Trailhead? What happened there? There's paving on that road that didn't use.
The village did do that.
Is it go, is it to the residents in that area or just, I I didn't travel all the way up it, but I.
They didn't pave it for the trailhead, I'll tell you that.
Okay.
But that's all I know. They, but it wasn't for the trailhead. Um, they, there's, there's some sort of agreement with the county in that area because that's one of those. Areas of town where it's a funny mixture of, of uh, city limits and county property.
I just know we talked about upgrading the trailhead and I I can see that the. Eco servants had done a lot of work on the Mud Canyon Trail. It looks, it's in good shape.
No, I just noticed that this weekend too, that they had done that road and I was pleasantly surprised. It was a, a good. It was a good move by the village, but I don't know why. It wasn't for the trailhead.
And then I guess we, we are having some, some rides from Jesse Townsend up to the lake. Is he providing that?
No.
He's not doing that?
No, we haven't made any progress and I'm not even sure how.
I know he's, he's having his petting zoo and stuff and things like that, but.
Haven't had any feedback other than loose goats in the neighborhood. So I don't know how he's doing.
If you can get them to trim the golf course a little bit.
Yeah, right? We don't mow, you know, we don't mow the courses, so you know, if they wanna clean it up, that's all right. Twice a week, just let them out.
Anybody else got any questions or? And and that's it for project updates? Paved, is the paving project started and being done or completed at the Eagle Creek?
They actually, uh, our, our purchasing department put a stop to it. They, they found an issue. Um, right when we were about to start with the procurement and so they put it, uh, hold on it. Um, and they're gonna have to re-look at that, uh, and. Probably request new quotes. We know it's a timely issue. Um, and just in relation to summer activity out there, we've had, already had. Um, really the largest events that we're going to see. Um, we've had um, adult tournaments, we've had youth baseball, youth softball and. Uh, since Memorial Weekend, we've had that summer tubing in operation as well. And we made some small tweaks to the, the parking situation. Uh, we put up some no parking signs in some places where the traffic was getting. Um, where people were parking where they shouldn't be. It was creating narrow uh, uh, access and only one lane. And so we put up no parking signs um, to minimize that and since then, we haven't had any issues at all. Um, it's been.
Great.
Uh, really, really good. I'm in a little bit surprised.
Yeah, that's awesome.
I figured we might see some growing pains from that, but.
The, um. I did have, you know, one of the concerns on that parking lot was, we discussed and we talked about several times, the development of that area was, is drainage. And now with the fire, is there any, did the, is the fire changed the?
I don't think that we have seen, um, the full impacts of the runoff yet. So they had one rain event, um, gosh, I can't even recall when it was. I think it was. A weekend, a week and a half ago. It wasn't this weekend, it was the prior weekend.
There's some rains that kind of put the, the halt to that fire in some way. It helped, helped it.
But there was a little bit of runoff from one of the rain events, um, and it didn't actually run. In the fire amazingly enough. It ran in the canyon where they had done a thinning project. Um, but the village has done, uh, we hired a, a dozer operator to put water bars in the fire line. Um, the village has done some work on some of the maintenance roads that were up there to try to divert water away from. The facility improvements. Um, we'll be seeding uh, later this week. The fire department will be dropping. Uh, some of the dead trees to uh, cross slope to help slope down the erosion. Um, and the, the village has put together a plan. Um, we're, we're currently carrying out that plan. Um, and, um, but really without any other resources, um. Like there's no uh, federal or state level resources on the fire. And they will be, I'm pretty sure, making a claim against the, um, the insurance, um, from the. The contractor who was standing the property.
Who will be making a claim?
The village will. But anyways, but we have a plan that we've been working on since it, uh, they put the fire out. And so far, we, it's been okay.
I was thinking about. Um, I don't know why that reminded me. You know, the, the Forest Foundation or whatever it's called, have we gotten any? Weren't we supposed to get, be getting?
So, um, they submitted a request for renewal, I believe, during the June council meeting. And the village agreed to renew for three years. Um, you know, I have expressed a little frustration with them on that Mud Canyon Trailhead. Uh, because we agreed to that last summer and uh, so they ran into a few issues with. Uh, they didn't want to be a, a bad neighbor to the RV park and so they, they. Um, I don't know how familiar you all are with that area, but there's a major drainage that comes down. They were looking at developing the trailhead. On the south side of the drainage, but because the neighbor, it's, they changed ownership. Previously, they had spoken with the owners. They weren't against it, so they decided to design that, the parking area on that side. Well, they changed management. The management wasn't very happy and so they didn't wanna just go through arguments or any more lawsuits or anything. They decided to move it to the north side of that drainage. And so, uh, that's been one of the issues that's uh, held it up. Um, but that's where the trailhead will be going in, is where that old gate was.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, the, the trails that the eco servants just built in go to that south, south side.
Right, and they're gonna have to redo that. Well, you could still use it.
Yeah, you can still access it, but it's, there seems like a, a real, the amount of space you're gonna have for parking is gonna be considerably.
Yes. It's a lot smaller than the other side, but there's a lot of dirt work that needs to be done. They'll expand that area and, and move the gate. Um, but I'm not sure about a timeline. At one point, they wanted the village to use their dozer. Uh, to do some of the excavating, but.
So that, so the foundation is in charge of getting that work done?
Um, y- yeah, they're, they overs, well, what they do is they, they really partner. With the village to try to, to get additional partners to compound the money that we're getting from the parking. To help implement additional projects in the future. So the more money or, and more partners they have, the more potential we have. For future projects like restrooms at a dis golf course or developing parking lots or those type of.
If they're actively seeking partners?
Uh, they are. Um, we had a meeting uh, last week to kind of, just kind of. Uh, regather our thoughts because through COVID, that.
Yeah.
Another program that fell off. Um, and we will be putting together a program, but again, what I. What I had. I have strong feelings that if we're gonna go out and seek additional pon- sponsors, that we oughta have a, a, a. A really nice project that we've completed, which is the trailhead. So it's important to me to finish that and we can say, look, this is what we've done just with one partnership, just with the village. The National Forest Foundation and the Forest Service. Imagine what we could do if we had other businesses on board contributing. Um, so we're gonna try to get that project completed, use it as a selling point to attract other community partners.
And so now there would be time, now that the village did, uh, go three more years.
Yes.
Nothing else to have a motion to.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second it.
I'm in favor.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I don't know if we needed to roll call.
Thank you.
I do, I miss.
Thank you, Rodney, as always.
Can somebody first stop record?
You're switching turn these.
Or I say something stupid?